Welcome everyone back from your long, long vacations and your relaxation. And a lot of you look tanned and happy and recharged. Other of us look burnt out and upset.
Yes.
All right, so as with every meeting, we'll start with the invocation. Councilmember here, since you look part of the recharged and tanned, do you want to?
Yes, sir. It's not my... I will say that if we could have a closed session and give the mayor... I thought it was on. Okay, there it is. I wanted to put it out there.
If I have it.
But welcome back, team. Thank you all for everybody coming back in today. It's been a, it's been a good time. You never know how much you need time down if you're just doing nothing but sit... You know what they call it, a staycation? Is that the right thing? Stay vacation, whatever, how you say it. But I, so it's good to see everyone back. And we'll go to the Lord in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we, we call upon you. We thank you, dear, dear Jesus, for just taking care of us while we and our families just took some fun and relaxation time. We greatly appreciate it. We thank you for the city. We thank you for our great city staff that keep everything moving forward. Lord, tonight, as we start back our second half of the year, we, we have a robust agenda tonight. We ask you to help our hearts to be open and our minds to be keen and sharp on each item, that we would listen to each other and staff if the presentations are read to us, and that we would do the right thing for the citizens that we represent. We thank you also, Lord, for good health and good strength and healing in our bodies for those of us that may have some aches and pains. We ask you, Father, to continue to do what you do as our Lord and Savior. And we thank you for today. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. All right.
Clogged up ears, ears, and I cannot hear well, so if y'all will make certain that you speak in your microphone so I can hear.
Stick that ocean water in them, huh?
Yeah. I'll tell them when the vote rings.
All right.
I don't know what happened. Plane travel.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, Councilmember here. Thank you, Councilman Green, for letting us know to speak into our mics. We also are joined remotely by Councilmember Banks McLaughlin. Are you there?
I am. Good afternoon, Mayor.
And Councilmember Benevente, are you there?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Good to, good to see and hear from you all. All right, counsel, I would ask, before we get into the agenda, at 3:00, I have to go to an appointment. I'll ask to be excused, and then I'll come back at the conclusion of that appointment to continue if you all are still meeting. So I'll probably, Madam Attorney, I need to take a vote, too.
Yeah, we can do that now.
You want to go ahead and excuse yourself?
Yeah, at, at 3:00, yeah.
Yeah, I moved that, team, that I moved that. We excuse the mayor at 3:00 P.M.
All right, it's a motion by Councilmember here. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by Councilmember Green. All right, whatever.
I'm going for first time, so.
Okay, all right. Any discussion on that? All right, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes to, to be excused. Jen, if I don't vote on this one, right? Oh, okay. All right. Who we missing? Councilmember Benevente?
Green.
Councilmember Banks McLaughlin?
Green.
All right, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Thank you, counsel, for consideration on that. All right, counsel, moving to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As everyone said, welcome back. While we did have a break in July, staff have been very busy. And as I shared with members of the city county liaison last weekend with council as well via email, we were able to successfully enter an agreement with the Cumberland County Schools for TCOs, traffic control officers, and SROs, safety resource officers, for the 49 schools within city limits. Our initial agreement with the county provides for six SROs that'll be able and deployable starting on August 25th. And as of this morning, I'm not sure how many TCOs we have lined up, but when staff came to work this morning, they were having some type of orientation, and the back parking lot was absolutely full. So I feel fairly comfortable that we will be able to honor the limited elements of the agreements that the council has authorized so that we can do our part for Cumberland County Schools for the upcoming school season. That's one. I would also, on a more somber note and sad note, would be remiss if I also did not, at your first meeting, formal meeting of council, even at this work session, say that during the month of July, we did lose an employee while working. His name was Joseph Mile. And we did send information out to that. And so if you could continue to keep he and his family and your thoughts and your prayers as well. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hewitt. And definitely our thoughts and prayers go out to his family. Counselors, we move to the agenda. We had, there was some preliminary discussion about getting an update from the city attorney on a legal matter pertaining to the Senior Center East. And then there was also some discussion as to whether you wanted to have it just a high level discussion or go into closed session. And so when you approve the agenda, if you want to include closed session, please make mention of that. If not, she said she can do it during the dinner meeting, a more detailed briefing during closed session of the dinner meeting of the next week's upcoming meeting.
Of course.
Yes, sir.
So, Ms. Attorney, this upper level discussion that you said that you could have, because we're getting questions anyway about it, is that something that you think you could do for us? Or do we need to be in closed session? Because I'm getting questions. I'm getting emails. I'm pretty sure everyone else is. Folks gonna want to know one way or the other.
Thank you, Councilmember here. Either way, it would need to be a closed session because it is a legal matter? It's just a matter of how much into detail I go today?
Then, then Mayor, if possible, I just move that we wait till the next meeting and have it in as you.
All right. So if there's a motion to approve the agenda as printed with...
Mr. Mayor, I think that we, with that motion, we will move closed session.
...meeting to the 12th for all of council to be able to hear the...
Of course.
...the item that we're talking about.
Right, yeah, because we do have two remote that are not able to participate. Okay. So it's a motion by Councilmember here. Is that second, Councilman Thompson?
Second, yes, sir.
All right, any discussion on the motion to approve the agenda as stated? All right, those in favor? Well, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, Councilmember Benevente? Councilmember Banks McLaughlin?
Green.
Councilmember Benevente, can you hear? All right, so, Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Are those voted? All right, counsel, moving to item 6.01, wayfinding in African American Heritage Trail. Mr. Hewitt, Mr. Gibson, you just got here.
Yes, sir, I did, I did. This is a quick update from our steward engineering and Jake on wayfinding in African American Heritage Trail. We have some signs behind you, and he got about four or five quick slides just to make sure that everybody's comfortable with the, with the, with the way we're headed with this, because you're going to start seeing some stuff in the next 60 to 90 days. Yes, sir, Mr. Councilmember here.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Gibson, as I was speaking to you earlier when we came in, and I think it's very relevant since it's been approved by council, I would love to know why there was no stand-ups or mentioning of the access from Merkison Road. I do understand that we do have what we have there that includes Bronco Square, well, Fayetteville State, but for that signage, but the access to Merkison Road, and I know that we have the preliminaries that was done, so I'm wanting to know why it's not a part out here.
So, Councilmember, let him, let him kind of give the briefing as to what area it includes, and then I'll circle back to you for the answer on that.
Just presenting Jake from steward engineering.
All right. Hi there, Jake. State Farm?
Oh. This ain't it. Hold on. This is, okay, yeah. I think I can answer that question for you through the presentation, so I think we'll be good. Let's see if we can maximize this. All right, can you all see that good? All right. So just to kind of tee this off, this wayfinding and signage implementation is part of a bigger, a bigger idea, a bigger plan. This vision for a center city parks and trails system that is really interconnected system of parks, green space, greenways, public spaces, attractions, destinations, that really provides for quality of life for residents in the greater downtown Fayetteville area, and then also destinations for visitors. So that, that, that was part of this plan that was developed back in 2022. And this is kind of, you see this system of, of trails and green spaces all the way from Mazarick Park in Fayetteville State down into Veterans Park in downtown, all the way out to the Cape Fear River. So that, that's kind of the vision. You have some great amenities in the greater downtown area and providing some key connections between those, like Mazarick Park and Fayetteville State and downtown and the Linear Park and all these other things, even, even over to Methodist University and the Cape Fear River Trail, the new Senior Center, Botanical Gardens, and these different stops of the African American Heritage Trail along the way. After kind of that plan, we looked, okay, how do we, how do we create a system of signage for, for the center city parks and trails and the African American Heritage Trail? And this, this plan was adopted, we talked last in February of this year, to kind of go over that. And a summary of it is really looking at wayfinding and signage to create this connected system of parks, greenways, and cultural sites so that it's easy to navigate. A lot of people don't realize that you have these great parks, that you have Linear Park, that you have these cultural sites that can easily be walked to or biked to or, or visited a few at a time, or you can kind of create a nice, a nice walking or jog to these different places. So we want to make it easy to navigate so people can go from one point to another and also have kind of this unified design and signage for the system. The African American Heritage Trail is a relatively new thing, but we want to draw more attention to that. It's actually a family of signs that will, will be connected to all these signs and be used for, for wayfinding purposes. We also have some, some ways to make it a little bit more visible in terms of some crosswalk art and some other things that we could do. But again, the, the goal is this integrated visual language so people can see, even if they're driving, they can see, okay, that's where the trail is, that, that's where there's a destination. And that they might not be able to stop there right away, but they, they know that it's there. And they, you know, eventually will lead to more people using it, more people exercising it, exercising and going out and getting connected to nature or visiting a park, and it can increase safety and increase health, and that's really the goal, also visitation. So getting to kind of where the rubber meets the road, you know, we've worked on some details on these signs, and you can see some, some of the first generation of the, of the signs here. But this is really what we're going to be working with Parks and Rec staff and Blashfield, a local sign company, to, to get some of these on the ground. The first part of this is, is working with the sign company to fine tune the designs of the signs. What are the first batch of signs that, that gets produced and then goes on the ground? This is kind of a, a map of the overall system, and you can see the, the hatched area in blue. Really, we're trying to, to sign the spine route, really from, from Mazarick Park to FSU and the new Senior Center, all the way down into downtown. In Hay Street and Linear Park over to LeMond Street is really the, the first phase of this implementation. That's going to be about 60 or 70 different signs. So you'll have some freestanding signs, like the big monument signs here. You'll have some directional signs here that kind of show how you can get to different parks and destinations, some mile marker or conformational signs. These are meant to tell you, you're on the right trail. You're on the Cross Creek Linear Park Trail or the Merkison Urban Trail, and this is what's coming down, down the way. And whether it's, you know, a five-minute walk or a 10-minute walk, that sort of thing. You also have some conformational medallions. These circle things right here are not meant to be freestanding signs, but actually stenciled on the pavement. So, so that you, when you're walking, you know, okay, I'm still on the trail. So the, the target areas are really, you know, in that first phase from Mazarick Park to FSU, down into downtown in the Cross Creek Linear Park. With that being said, that's, that's just the Phase 1A. And I, and I think that the next, next phase is really going to be looking at other connections. So Rowan Park Connection, Cape Fear River Trail, Blunt Creek, Hay, Hay Street, E.E. Smith, or the Orange Street School Connector, more educational signage. So this, this first, first batch is not just these. It's going to be a number of different, you know, signs customized so people can get from point A to point B. So these are not the only signs that are going to be done. There's going to be 60 or 70 in that, that first phase, and then even after that, we're going to do some more after that.
Got, got a couple questions on that. I got to Councilmember, was something, well, yeah, let me just start with it. So Councilmember here, I had a question. Mayor Protim, and yourself.
Give me your name again, please.
Jake from State Farm.
Jake Petrofsky.
Okay. Now again, I didn't get it earlier, but now I see. Jake from State Farm. Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, I appreciate what you all have done. I appreciate what the director has done, and the way signing, wayfinding signs are very important, not just here, but throughout the city, throughout the county. But I stand disappointed, even though you say that it's a part of another phase, it's a part of another set of drawings. I stand disappointed because this has been very, very important. It's been an item that the citizens that have brought to us over the last, I guess we're going into our third year of speaking of this, all the way to the point that it was mandated that we do the survey. It was mandated that we have the public hearing at Smith Recreation Center, and it's mandated that we have some results. And sometimes I get a little, say my wording properly, sometimes I get a little hard to accept what is always being presented because it's the next time, and it's the next time, and it's the next time. And we're going into approximately a third year, close to it, of it's the next time. As I stroll through every document that you have here, I do not see not one thing that states, "And the next time," this. I don't even see, I don't see it in your presentation. If I have missed it, please tell me what page is on, and I'll spin back to it. I'm tired of and disappointed that we continue to have these discussions, but we don't get there. The, the people have demanded that there be the, the connection, the, the access, even if it goes across or if it's just the decking. And I know it's been a part of the preliminary study. That should be here, that the preliminary study should be, the preliminary designs should be here. I mean, when do we ever get there? Is it just words, or are we really going to see some action? So that's where I stand. I mean, I think everything you're doing is well, great. Don't, I'm not talk, turn that down. But this has been an issue that I've worked and worked with council to get some kind of support on. They've given me, those that have supported, have given support for this, those that did vote for it, and I would like to see it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, I think there's a lot of different movement parts related to this system, right? There's the signage, but then also you're bringing up some connections to Mazarick Park that are, that are desired, and there's plans to, to move forward and do, do some design of actually, you know, new boardwalk bridge, all that.
Jake, even if we didn't have that, Jake, you know how sometimes you pass through and they say, you'll see the sign, "Future such and such."
Yeah, yeah.
I see them everywhere, you know, even future builds, future car walk, whatever it is. That would give, that would show the hope.
Mm-hmm.
Because the community needs hope, the community needs an uplift there just for what's going on in the community. It's going down to people that, that were the original owners or passed away, you know? So you see where I...
Yeah, yeah. And, and just to kind of give you a sense, like, this is, this is definitely moving forward. Each one of these signs, each one of these 70 signs is going to have a design that is in, in a place where it's going to go. We have a little bit of flexibility on this in, in terms of the content of these, and I think what you're bringing up is a good, a good idea. Because on one of these, or a couple of these, we might want to talk about not just what's there, but what's coming. And, and we've done this elsewhere, where there's a key greenway extension, you can say, you know, "Future Blunt Creek Trail," or "Future Mazarick Park Connector," which is what you're referencing, or "Future East Shore Trail," which is the, the trail that's planned on the east side of Glenville Lake that'll go to that connector, so that we kind of create a system that is anticipating what's coming. Some of these projects, you know, they, they need more, you know, design work, you know, we need to find some funding, that sort of thing.
Jake, I have to say, Councilmember here, in the planning document on page 11, it actually shows the East Shore Trail that Jake was referencing.
Page 11?
Page 11, yes, sir, in the actual document, not the CD, not the PowerPoint.
You said not the PowerPoint?
You said not the PowerPoint?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's on the PowerPoint, too. It's on this slide as well, just that dash line there, yep.
Where is it on the PowerPoint?
Slide three.
And so Jake and Michael, I want to make sure that what we're asking council is, is to accept the plan which outlines how these signs would look and where they would be located. And you said that in full bloom, we're looking at more than 70 signs and decals on...
More than that. I mean, you know, we're, we're taking this in, in a couple different phases. The first one would really look at the spine route, like going from Fayetteville State, Mazarick Park, down into downtown, and then LeMond Street. And then we can do even more than that.
LeMond Street.
LeMond Street, yeah. We can do, we can do even more than that.
And get fancy ones.
And, and so it's probably going to be, you know, all told, it's going to be a lot more than 70, but at least this first batch is 70.
Could you just please, I don't want to spoil you off, but could you just tell me what, what does it say on page 11? Let me, let me say something. Just tell me which word is...
So it says Mazarick Park, East Shore Trail, it has a...
Well, because I know that we have a East Shore Trail that comes down be, well, I know we have a trail that comes down from Mazarick Park through and goes to the MLK. Is this a part of the...
It's, it's, it's going to be.
Because in that case, that's not mentioned in it. I know of that trail.
Right, but what I, what I want to make sure that we do is, the access trail that you're talking about has funding.
Yes, sir.
What I would like to do is probably the first of October is to come back to that work session and specifically talk about how we implement that part of the trail into the system so it has its own day.
Now, what you just said went into the minister.
Did somebody write that down? Did somebody write that down?
I mean, I'm just tired of us talking about...
No, no, no. And that's what I want to do, is I want to make sure that we give it its, its time, so that we focusing on it, and then it'll just be me bringing you that and how we're going to implement that and how it's going to go.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Don't go too far. All right, so counsel, just to kind of give some background to this, probably, was it, Michael, about three years ago?
Even.
Was kind of dealing with the members of the General Assembly about the History Center, and we were talking about the importance of connecting all of these individual projects that we were kind of doing at different phases, and brought together the Martin Luther King Committee, the Emoza Committee, Orange Street School Association, the History Center folks, and it was one more. But the General Assembly gave a million and some change to get to this point, to connect all of this. Now, I think it's incumbent upon us, Michael, and as the council has their questions, and Jake, to talk about what the next phase looks like. Because we, we've got them committed for a million and a half or so to get it to this point. What does Phase 2 look like, and when will you have some preliminary numbers on what that is so that we can start to, to advocate for that?
Well, that's, that's basically what you're, you're getting ready to approve tonight, so that once you approve this signage and this wayfinding, this starts to ball the rolling. And if you go back, Jake, I don't know how we can get back to the other, the other signs. I mean, the other, right, no, go back one more time. Right there. This is the implementation. If you go, if you look at it on the screen, this is the implementation of Phase 1, and then we'll have a second phase, and then you'll end up with a third phase, and we'll be, that we'll be spending those funds, making sure that those trails and all of those connectable groups that you talked about, well, how we got the funding, that's how this works, and that's why you see all of these, these signage. And where Councilmember here is talking about the access trail is just an added piece into this whole network.
Right. So that's the bigger master plan.
Exactly.
So I just want to make sure we see that. All right, thank you. Mayor Protim, and then Councilmember Thompson, and then Banks McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm, I'm going to go, thank you for this. This is great work. I think it's beautiful. Everything's great about it. I'm excited for it to come up. But, so I, I'm going to pay attention to some detail, and, and I hope you know what I'm getting ready to say, but I'm going to stand up and say, "We are about branding. I don't see purple when I think of Merkison Road." I don't see purple when I think of works the road.
Those are not the colors.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because, I mean, I am hoping that they are bronco blue, because we are branding, not... So...
Lauren has made us well aware of that.
Okay, it would like trying to be putting a purple sign on the north side of town.
We know purple in Greece, don't we, Lauren?
We're working with Lashfield Sign Company on colors, and also some sizes a little bit. I think, like, the monument sign's going to be a little smaller. This sign's going to be a little smaller. The mile marker might need to be a little bit bigger. So that's kind of why we're doing these test runs, to kind of fine tune those things.
I just want to make sure that that is bronco blue, because for branding, we did not hit the mark.
Not at bronco blue, no, sir. All right. So, thank you, Mayor Protim. Go to Councilmember Thompson, and then Banks-McLaughlin.
It's in the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is about branding also, because as I was reading over this information over the weekend, it said most of this signage was going to be connected to poles. You mean light poles? Because if you're talking about light poles, are we putting lighting along these trails? If not, what type of poles are you talking about? You mentioned some was going to be enstoned in the concrete. What about signage that needs to be on the trail, or in the grass, or just right off the trail? How are we going to go about doing that?
Well, it's going to be a different condition in different parks of the trail. Like, for instance, there will be a section on Hay Street or on the existing linear park. If there is a pole that we can hang some of the directional signage right here, we might utilize that. Some will have to have freestanding poles, because there's not any in place. Lighting is not part of what we're thinking about right now, but there might be certain conditions where we have to think about it. And we do have a little bit of wiggle room to make some adjustments based on, you know, what we need in different locations.
Now, you just brought another question. So if these trails are going to be open during dusk, how are they going to see the signage if there is no lighting?
They're not open after dusk.
That was my question. Got you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin.
She's typing right now, but her first statement was that, "Let's look into changing the FSU color to the blue."
Way on it, ma'am.
Yeah, Mayor Protim asked her a question.
Okay, that's it?
Yes, sir.
All right. Michael, you never answered the money question. So when will you have a cost estimate about? The thing is, what is Atlanta's trail that goes around?
Beltline.
Beltline. So, multi-year project, long-term thinking. The goal, which we've been working on Cape Fear River Trail components since I've been on council 12, 13 years. So it seems like it's now finally complete. Some of these other ones are now complete. Can you give us a little glimpse about when there will be full connection, and when are we projecting? Because I like to set goals about things for us to look forward to.
Well, one of the things that we have is, we have money to put designs on the shelf. Getting money, just like I was talking to Councilmember here about construction funding, those are a little bit more difficult. Through FAMPO, through DOT, we've tried several different places where we'd raise grants. We can get the design, and that's the most important thing. And once you get it on the shelf, then you can always submit it to DOT or FAMPO for funding. But we have a greenways plan, and we've been surgically talking about how to implement it. The same thing with the Cape Fear River Trail, you're going to hear about that hopefully in October, and how we're going to finish that one out, how that goes around.
Each one of these already had plans, didn't they?
They had, they had plans, but they didn't have any construction drawings. Yeah, well, all we did was, the council adopted a greenways plan, but every trail does not have construction drawings. So that's what I was trying to make sure that Councilmember here understands. We're going to take his trail to construction drawings and get some funding to go ahead and implement the trail, so it actually is there. It exists. Our total greenways plan is probably somewhere in the neighborhood of about 15 to 18 million.
To fully connect?
Yes, sir, to make sure that you have a walkable community.
Okay. All right. Council, any other questions? I see Councilmember Thompson. I see it moving.
See, you just brought another question to mind.
I'm going to quit talking.
How are we going to get that funding? FAMPO and grants will be able to fund the $18 million to complete this project?
It's a slow process. The biggest thing that you have to do is you have to have construction drawings.
Right.
So that they now know that it's something, if they fund, you're going to actually do the work.
So let me ask you another question. Are we going to ask for this funding in phases, or we're just going to ask for it all at one time?
In phases.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
So any of the infrastructure bond money capable to be used for any of this stuff? As you talk about walkability, bikeability?
It could be, but I also want to, yes, I also want to clarify something that Michael said, and Michael and Adam and others, correct me if I'm wrong, and Mayor Protim, and I think Mayor is also on FAMPO board. When we're applying for monies, we have a variety of projects. And so the first is to make sure we have a balanced approach, that we're not, if we apply for all $18 million for trails, that may mean we're leaving money on the table for something else, because there's a finite amount of money. And so Michael was really hitting it, the balanced approach, to think of this as a long 10 to 15-year improvement. It was, Michael, how many years ago that the council actually changed that we can actually build trails in the... Where did he go? The Riparian Buffer. In the Riparian Buffer. Just a simple change like that meant that there was a ton of available space between here, I think Fort Liberty and others. Well, it was the big Cross Creek Trail. That was one of the things that sort of derailed us, because we would have to go, going through Cascade, the backside of...
Broadell.
Broadell. We would have to be in people's backyard. Council changed that about four to five years ago. So now we can build right on the creek, 30 yards off of it. So now we don't need as much ride away from people. So now that trail becomes cheaper for us to install. And if you go in parts of Raleigh, particularly up Capitol Boulevard and others, you'll see they have trails in what looks like straight-up woods. And it is, they're always active. And I think I was around the lake, Mazarick Shore will be a little bit tamer, but that's the goal. And so it has to be a balanced approach over multiple years. And as he said, this are all domino pieces that, once they start falling, everything else falls into place. But FAMPO is a great place for us to start.
So, Councilmember here, you had something?
Just wanted to make sure that that next set of drawings, you said that presentation would be in October.
Yes, sir.
Did you say October? And in October, that's when I'm going to be seeing what my discussion and what the community has been asking about. I'll see that in October.
Oh, yeah.
And as far as the second phase of the signage that Jake from State Farm mentioned, I'll be seeing that sign or some new designs, future coming, or however, I'm pretty sure going to come up with different concepts of those signs. I'll be seeing that, too.
Well, I mean, I think the plan was to work with a sign company and get some of these signs on the ground. Each sign is going to have an individual design.
So the future, the future, the future of the access, you know, from this direction. Are you speaking of that sign, too, Michael? Okay.
We'll have, when we start this process, and then your access trail is part of the network that council has already approved. So once we start working on that, you could easily see signs that say connectability in the future here. So people have some idea...
So that's going to be a part of those signs that we're speaking of that's coming in October, or whenever they're coming?
The design for your trail becoming in October, the signage is already, once you say, "Yeah, we like what we're seeing," we can incorporate that now. So if you're walking down Filter Plant...
You're going to incorporate the signs I'm speaking of now?
Oh, yeah, we don't have a choice. That's what he's saying.
I think we could come up with a new sign type that's just, you know, "Future Trail Here," you know, that kind of thing. We can share with you. I don't think we need to come back to this body. But we can share it with you, because I think that's a great idea. Because it's not just about what's on the ground, what you can get to now, but it's also, you know, that awareness of what's coming.
Yeah, and that shows the community hope that it's getting closer.
Yeah.
That's what I want. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mayor Protim, Jensen, then we need to move to the next item, guys.
So, Mr. Mayor, do we need to make a motion to accept the...
Yes.
Yes. So I'd like to make a motion that we accept, for consensus, that we accept the wayfinding plan in the African-American Heritage Trail.
With the modifications that were mentioned.
With the modifications that were mentioned.
All right. All right. Motion by Mayor Protim, and a second by Councilmember here. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, you have something? Okay, look to your free votes.
I don't know if somebody's going to put October in there.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, I'm sure you got the specificity of the conversation.
We voted. We're good. We'll come back.
Yeah, all right. All right. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin?
Green.
Councilmember Benevente? He's tasting cake right now. All right, so...
He put green in it. He put green in the chat.
Put greens there, okay. All right. Motion carries. All right, council, thank you, Mr. Jake. All right. Council move to six point... Oh, Mr. Man.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, Mayor, I forgot to mention before we lose everybody, and I'll try to make this brief. Chief Dove, if you could come forward with Laura. We want to give you with Hurricane Debbie spinning, that we wanted to introduce you to our emergency management coordinator, as well as we allow her to give you a brief. You'll be seeing a lot of emails from her in the coming days, Chief Dove.
Hey, everybody, welcome back. We're going to take two opportunities here. One, I want to introduce you to Laura Smith. She's our new emergency management coordinator. And since we want to get you the best bang for your buck, we're going to brought in this little bitty storm to stretch her legs a little bit.
Little bitty storm.
I'm kind of offended. Little Debbie's always been my first love and girlfriend, even my wife knows it.
Watch it, chief.
But she's turned on me, so I'm mad right now.
Anyway, Laura. You'll need some 911. You keep it up.
Good afternoon, everyone. So as we know, Hurricane Debbie made landfall early this morning in Florida. We are not going to expect Matthew and Florence impacts by any means. I know there's a lot of concern with the amount of rainfall that we've already had leading up to this. But just to put it into a little bit of perspective, the Cape Fear River at Grove Street Bridge, the gauge is currently reading at 12.4, with major flooding being at 58 feet. So we would have to have massive storm surge from the coast, you know, feed into the river in order for that to happen. We're not going to expect anything like that. Most of our rain is going to happen on Wednesday and Thursday. We are expecting anywhere from eight to 12 inches of rain, with the storm passing through Fayetteville on Friday. We may begin to start to see effects from the storm as early as tomorrow afternoon. But again, most of our rain is going to happen on Wednesday, Wednesday afternoon through Friday afternoon. With the rain, we're going to see wind gusts anywhere from 25 to 40 miles per hour. And, I mean, that's really about it as far as the storm. She's very disorganized. She is changing daily. She has even moved further east than she had first thing this morning. As far as county's posture on mass care needs and all of that, I will know more tomorrow afternoon, when they have their meeting.
So did have a, that's good news, first of all. I remember the last time with those two, the fact that the storm moved slow and it just sat and rained for a while. I think they said this was a slow-moving system. Any concern with that causing our, because I think it started the last time with our creek beds not being able to empty out, and then it backed up from the coast. So any concern with it sitting there for two or three days and dumping rain that our creeks have issues?
Right. I know Stormwater is working on some areas of cleanup, making sure everything is cleaned up. I'm working with marketing and communications to put out appropriate messaging as far as making sure your homes and storm drains and all that is cleaned out. Fire departments are checking their districts for the storm drains to make sure that they are all cleared up as well.
Okay, and are we messaging the flood-prone areas about evacuation or shelter opening options for that?
Once the county makes their decision on mass care, we'll get that information out.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, and I've added you all to my email for updates.
All right. Mayor Protim, Jensen, and then Councilmember here and Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say to the council, I mean, I'm very glad to hear that we're not in a Florence or a Matthew situation. That was a big curve learning lesson for all of us, and we're much smarter because of it. But what I did want to say to the council members, especially ones that have not been through a hurricane and through corporate communications, storm drains are a very important thing. And in your neighborhoods, when it starts getting bad, you can see it where the storm drains, it's just not going anywhere. But if you call your neighborhood watch leaders, captains, I promise you the difference that will be made if people go out in their neighborhoods when it's raining and clear those storm drains. It will make a huge difference. And I will tell you, the second one, I think it was Florence was our second. We had a group of Boy Scouts going through neighborhood, their neighborhoods doing it. So it makes a difference and things like that. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Councilmember here.
And thank you, Mayor, and very good points, because those storm drains, that was going to be one of my questions or thoughts. Mayor, you know, you showed an email earlier. That was the first time I had seen it about the postponement of our national night out. So it would be a great opportunity for our department to speak that into the mic, that our national night out, which normally would be on August the 6th, we are not canceling them. We're just postponing them. And I didn't see if there was a future date, but I just know they will postpone. Is that correct, Mayor?
Chief, you want to speak to that?
Yes, we received that this morning, and they said they were working on updated dates. Do you have anything, Chief Braden?
We contacted all the people that were having events earlier this morning. They'll be getting back to us, let us know if they can probably schedule that event. We'll make that public through our Facebook and all our social media.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also wanted to mention for all those who have lakes, please lower your spillways one, two, maybe even three days in advance, if you have the opportunity, to lower your lake. So when you do have excess water coming, it has time to recoup. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Well, we appreciate it. New to the team?
New to the team. I was at the county for about seven, eight years, and came over in March to the city.
Welcome to the best side.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Item 6.03, air lakes dam overtopping protection. Who's presenting that? Hey, sir, how are you? Did I?
Yeah, storm water.
All right, storm water. I'm sorry about that.
I'm on both of them, so... How do I get this to show my... Yes, that's the first one. Just the arrow keys to move it. All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor and council, thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Jim Talley in Department of Public Services, and I'm here to talk about stormwater. We're making great progress, but it will not be ready for this week. So give us, give us some time, and we'll get you there. The city has received grants from ARPA that require us to make regular reports to city council so that y'all know what we're up to. So that's the purpose of my first presentation today, is to update you on what we're doing with the $10.55 million of ARPA funds. It has been allocated to four projects listed there in the third and fourth bullets on your screen. And I will give you a brief update on each of those four projects. First, Adam Street is the furthest along of the four, and it is just moving into construction. It's about 1,000 feet of storm drainage, with another 1,300 feet of water line that we're teaming with PWC on. This contract has begun. The first pay application has been submitted. We've paid out about 4% of this project cost at this point, and it is moving along. It should be done around February of next year. The second project, Ray Avenue, is, has been awarded also, but its construction has not begun. We're actually waiting to start construction until after the International Folk Festival, which ends September 29th. So we will, actually, our notice to proceed date is September 30th. So we're hoping to get started immediately after that festival this fall, and to be finished by March. We should be finished that project in March. $2.95 million, of which about $700,000 to $800,000, is a Public Works Commission contribution that we will be reimbursed for. Third project, Sunberry Drive, up off of Rose Hill Road, up near MacArthur Road, about 3,000 feet of storm sewer in this project. It has also been awarded, we're going through the process now of signing the final paperwork. It should get started this fall, and it's about 1,000 feet of water main and with about 200, I'm sorry, 3,000 feet of storm main with 1,000 feet of water main being also done by PWC concurrent with us. And then finally, we have North Street. North Street is also, the paperwork is going through to get the contract signed. It has been awarded. It is about almost 1,900 linear feet of storm drain, and it is a bit longer. It's about a year and a half long project. And of that $3.9 million, only about 10% of that is PWC on this particular project. But they are participating in some way in all four of these projects. So, in summary, the total of these four contracts, $15 million, with PWC contributing about $3.2 million, leaving 12.1 for us. As I mentioned on the first slide, the grant is for about $10.5 million. So, the difference there is being made up by funds left over from other stormwater projects that are finishing up. And we will use those funds to fill out the rest of this $15 million budget. All four of these projects are on schedule and intended to be completed by our December deadline, which is December 2026 deadline, which is almost two and a half years away. So, we're pretty confident that, very achievable goal. And do I have any questions?
You do.
I do.
Councilmember Maher.
Thank you for your presentation thus far. What my question is, and I don't know if that's something that you can answer, maybe the city manager, but I thought that we had a discussion some time back that some of the GeoBond referendum for 2023 would also be stormwater improvements for the Helen Street area. And I've been quiet about it, but we make another presentation. I don't see it there, and I understand. But is there, is there a future plan for? Because two of the major concerns that that community had was, of course, the sidewalks, which I'm not speaking of, but also the storm water. And my support for it in going forward was inclusive of that. That's just my question.
I'm not sure about the GeoBond. Jim, do you know? He's here today to talk about how we plan to leverage the ARPA money to complete these stormwater-funded stormwater projects. But we can definitely track that down and get you some information on it.
Yeah, there are definitely other projects in the works. This report today specifically was a requirement of the ARPA grant that we come and we update you on these four projects.
Yes, sir, I'm with you with that.
All right. Helen Street, I know the sidewalk is definitely on our short-term agenda, but I have not heard discussion of Helen Street stormwater. But we are in the process of assessing the rankings of all the projects. You know, we're having hundreds of projects come out of the program, and we're establishing formal guidelines for rating these projects. And we should have some results soon on what those ratings are, but we're not ready yet to assign a rating to the other projects.
Just questioning. I'm getting it from the community, so.
I understand.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yeah, all right, and we'll get a more detailed briefing on stormwater. We usually set up a work session to kind of give us an overview of everything, but we appreciate it. Any more questions pertaining to the stormwater ARPA-related? All right, so now 6.03.
6.03. Yes, I guess that's right, I'm sorry. Okay, so this particular discussion is about the Aaron Lakes West Dam Overtopping Protection. This basically came out of the ongoing watershed master planning studies, in particular, the study for the Beaver Creek Section 3 watershed master plan. That master plan produced a total of 12 different proposed solutions that were put on the table and are in the pipeline for future work. Two of those were deemed as immediate projects to be done. Those are the Remish Drive Stormwater Project and the Rockford Drive Stormwater Project. And both of these are actively in design and are moving forward right now. One of the aspects of these projects and every project that we do is the mitigation of downstream impacts. Like any developer that has to, that paves area increases stormwater runoff, has to provide detention or some mitigation for the impacts of their work. We also need to provide mitigation for these stormwater projects. Obviously, if you have flooding in a neighborhood and you figure out a way to move that flooding somewhere else, you have to make sure that that somewhere else is not negatively impacted. So, we are looking at detention, stormwater detention management for all projects, every project that this has to be done for. Of the 12 projects in this particular watershed, we are looking at all those, but in particular, the two projects that are actively in design right now. Other impacts from the work we are proposing are potential decreases in the level of service at Carloway Drive from a 25-year event down to a 10-year event, and at the Power Station Access Road from a five-year event down to a two-year event. So, obviously, helping things in one area can potentially make it worse in other areas if you don't mitigate what you're doing. Also, small increases in the water surface in the Aaron Lakes West Lake, the overtopping frequency. That dam has six inches of freeboard in a 10-year event. Freeboard, meaning the difference between the elevation of the water in the lake and the elevation of the road. So, there's not a lot of buffer there. So, we're definitely looking at ways to mitigate this as we do with all projects that we do. Other impacts, the Rockford and Remish job, increases to the BCTB, that's the Beaver Creek Tributary B. This creek didn't have a name, so we had to give it a name. The Aaron Lake West water surface elevation and the Aaron Lake West discharges, the tributary flows there could increase by up to 10 cubic feet per second in a 10-year storm and up to 112 cubic feet per second in a 100-year storm with water surface increases in the order of 1 to 2 tenths of a foot there also. There's no particular level of service change there, but the depth and increase in frequency of flooding are things that will need to be mitigated. Just a little picture there of Aaron Lakes West Dam. This is obviously not in a situation where we have six inches of freeboard. This is a more normal scenario. So, how do we do this? How do we provide this detention? We were looking at detention at each of these 12 different locations. Obviously, when you're working in already-developed subdivisions, there's not a lot of open space available to provide new detention. And if we did try to do detention at each of these 12 locations, we would still have to, the protection provided by them would still have to be maintained forever, basically. You'd have to maintain those facilities. As an alternative, we looked also at regional detention, that is concentrating all 12 of these detentions in one location and trying to take advantage of what we hope to be significant financial benefits by doing that. And that regional location is the Aaron Lakes West Dam. We looked at a couple of different options at that location itself, including spillway improvements, lowering the permanent pool elevation, as was already mentioned, as a method potentially to be used this week, dredging to provide more storage volume in that lake, or overtopping protection as a second alternative we looked at. Basically, overtopping protection means that you get more storage in the reservoir by allowing the water to overtop the dam. Normally, overtopping in earthen embankment is potential for a catastrophe. They are not designed to deal with water flowing over the top of them. So, by providing enough protection on the dam's surface to allow water topping to occur, you can basically get more storage and more benefit out of what you already have existing. And that's basically the strategy that we feel is probably the most feasible in this particular location. Here's some cost comparisons. If we did localize detention at Rockford and Remish, the two projects currently under design, we're talking about about $8.7 million, whereas we can do overtopping at Aaron Lakes West Dam for just a little bit less than that. But the benefit is that that then opens up that none of this additional $33.5 million for the other projects would ever have to be done. We're covering it all at this point in time and thereby leaving capabilities, adequate protection for the other 10 storage projects to occur when they rise to the top of the list. So, overall, the results have been that overtopping protection at Aaron Lakes West Dam likely presents the most direct, the most effective, and the most economical solution to protect the facility from potential flow changes. One other thing I should probably mention is that Aaron Lakes Dam is a privately-owned dam. And therefore, there are a lot of other implications, other than engineering implications, on how that would be accomplished. But we feel that that is certainly worth overcoming due to the tremendous cost savings that we're showing here and the overall benefit to the community and the city as a whole. So, our staff recommendation is we're asking council to direct the staff to move forward with project development and the design of the Aaron Lakes West Dam Overtopping Protection Project. And at that, I will open it up to questions.
Thank you for your presentation. I have Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. I have quite a few questions. One that I didn't notice until you just said it, as I was reading over this material. You're, and correct me if I'm wrong, overtopping is the best method in order to save $33.5 million?
No, it reduced the 33.5 down to 8.5.
Got you. So, it would cost 33.5 if we didn't do the overtopping?
If we didn't do overtopping and we wanted to build all 12 of those projects, yes. Right now, we're just have two of them in design. So, right now, the demand for detention is only 8.7 million. So, right now, we're only saving $200,000, but over the long term, another 20,000, 20 million.
Got you. I'm going to try to go through these questions directly. With the improvements that you want to do on Rockford and on Remish, how would that affect Bailey Lake Road, new construction that's going right next to the fire station? And how would it affect Williamsburg, who is on the backside of the Aaron Lakes West Lake?
Well, each developer is required to provide their own mitigation for their particular development. So, we are not really providing protection for any individual development, other than our own work, other than the work we are doing to reduce flooding in the neighborhoods. We, I guess a developer could possibly approach us and want to maybe participate in some way, contribute, but I don't know the legalities of that or the precedent for that. But we're not providing protection for any private development.
Overtopping means that you would have to close the main entrance going into Aaron Lakes West off of Bingham Drive, correct?
Yes, if it overtopped, it would close the road for a while.
So, now you, so now we would create a one-way in, one-way out for over 300 homes that would have to come out of Fisher Road, which is a busy street with two schools at the end of.
Yes, sir. That would occur only during the event, which is much better than losing the road altogether to an overtopping failure, which would take years to replace. But you would lose it during the event itself, yes, sir.
Which is another question. Aaron Lakes is a private lake, so how do you, are you asking city council to, I guess, make them sign on to this project? I mean, where do we go from here?
Where, yeah, that's an excellent question, and we realize those are, that's a big question that's looming out there. We're asking you for permission to proceed and investigate this further, basically. You know, you could say, take it off the table, and we have to go back to more traditional and potentially more extensive solutions, or we could get your authority to go forward and see what kind of things we can work out. But it's not going to be easy, I won't say that.
Well, as a representative of that district, I think it would behoove the community to try to look at this project so they don't lose their lake in case we have another little Debbie come through or a large Debbie to come through, which would not be able to mitigate the amount of water that would come through. But my last question would be acquisition of property. From the briefing that I got from my stormwater department, in order for you to complete this, you would have to acquisition three properties, I think, on the Bingham Drive side in order to do the overtopping. I can't remember off the name of the street. And if so, why aren't we looking at that now when two of those three properties are vacant?
Well, that's, I believe, exactly what we're asking for your authority to do, sir, is to take a look at this.
No further questions, Mayor Protim.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Honduras.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Mr. Jim, is that right? Thank you. You did a commendable job filling in for Director Sheila Thomas-Mbatt and Assistant Director Byron Reeves. They'd be proud. The overtopping protection of that dam, is there a road or a street above that?
Yes, public street on a private dam.
So, we own the street?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
If we are to approve you to look further, this would also require a public hearing, correct?
Would require a what?
Public hearing.
Public hearing? I have no idea.
Madam Attorney?
I don't think so. I'm not exactly, they're talking about really just investigating at this point.
I said after they did the investigation, in order for us to move forward after that, would they need a public hearing?
I don't think so, but I'll double check.
Thank you, Madam Attorney.
So, before we go to a, and I'll swing right back to you, Councilmember Honduras. For somebody that has been through the overtopping and the street falling into the ground and having one way in and one way out, I will say that it will cost the city more money in the future if that happens. And I lived through it. It took a year and a half to get our road fixed and to get the culvert right. And year and a half, and I think that we really need to think about it. So, I will be supporting it. Councilmember Honduras.
I'm prepared to make a motion unless my colleague.
I would, Councilmember, but.
Then I'll second.
Let me just also state that it being a private lake, if it was to overtop and fail, the city would not pay for it because it's a private lake. So, we already have four communities under the same circumstances with Hurricane Matthew and Hurricane Florence came through. But with that being said, I think so it doesn't happen, I will also approve this project. So, when another 100 or 50-year storm comes through, they're not in the same condition as the previous four communities who are still fighting to get water back in their lakes. So, thank you, Mayor Protim. But on that note, I would like to direct staff to move forward with the project development and design of the Aaron Lakes West Dam Overtopping Project.
And we have a second with Councilmember Honduras, and I'm sorry, I have one discussion. I just have one question. At one time, was the Aaron Lakes Dam under the city?
Never that I know of. Not Aaron Lakes Dam.
I thought during Matthew that I had heard that. Okay. It's just, I thought I had heard that. Okay, so I'm going to call for the vote, please. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin? Councilmember Benevente? Okay, that is unanimous with those voting. Thank you so much for your presentation. It was great. All right, we are going to go to 6.04. All right, we are gonna go to 6.04, City Council Policy Review for Streets, Traffic, and Parking Revisions. Good afternoon. Good to see you again.
I am happy to be here. How do I switch it over? Oh, wait. Uh-huh. What's up? Okay, I got it. Hey. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Brian McGill. I'm here to present the City Council Policy Review for Public Services. This is on Streets, Traffic, and Parking. This is gonna be a very, very short presentation, trying to save you guys some time here. This did go in front of the City Council Policy Review Committee. This went in front of them on November 1st, 2023. It went in front of them again on June 26th, 2024, and then from there, it was unanimously recommended to come here in front of you all. This is just gonna be a summary of what the recommendations from that policy review committee and what the revisions to the policy are that we're recommending. And these are city council policies that are either being superseded by City Code of Ordinances or by the UDO, whether they're being superseded or they are currently in conflict. So for the street improvements, right now, city council policy is saying one number, but our standard details is saying a different number, and our standard details are the ones that we're referring to for all the designs that we're doing for developers. And then for, and again, I'm trying to condense this, so if I'm moving too fast, please slow me down. But for the street improvement section, we do have a fee schedule. This is in reference to repaving of dirt roads or soil roads. To my knowledge, there's only one soil road remaining in the city. If that does get repaved, or if that does get paved, they would go to council for recommendation. And so that part is being removed, but we do have a fee schedule for that. And then additionally, there is also some standards in there about what the new, new street design standards have to be. However, again, city standard details are being recommended to developers about what those numbers should be. And then it's just cleaning up the city council policies regarding street improvements as council approves the list for repaving. Whenever it comes to sidewalk construction and maintenance, there's a lot of red on this slide. Essentially, though, whenever a driveway permit is filed for by developers and they require a driveway permit, then we also require them to install a sidewalk. And a lot of this is dealing a lot with what is being required as part of the sidewalk. And so that's what a lot of the red on here is essentially talking about. There's also talk about what private streets are being required to be built up to, and our policy in the Code of Ordinances is saying that the private streets have to be built to public standards, public standards. And public standards is something that we have on our website and something that we provide to developers. And then in terms of sidewalk funding, there is a section in here that talks about what the Sidewalk Payment and Lue Waiver Fund that the city has is used for. Our Code of Ordinances already talks about what that money can be used for. And so we just wanted to marry those two up and essentially clean it up so that we're not in conflict. And this is, again, there's another policy under city council policies where we're recommending that this is entirely removed as the city, or as the Code of Ordinances supersedes it with the policy that's already out there regarding the sidewalk waiver fund or the sidewalk payment and lue fund. For the speed limit change policies, there is discussion about a, something called a thoroughfare or feeder-street system plan. The city doesn't, does not have one of those, and so we are recommending that we remove that from the city council policy because, yeah, we don't have, we don't have those. Street naming changes, no comments. Again, this is just cleaning it up so that we're not in conflict with UDO for loading and unloading zones. Except for private streets, no comments. The fees for events, we're just trying to get it on par with fee schedules. We're revising the language on that one. And then for street paving for new utilities, recently, there was some work done with language on that, and we're just updating it, or we're removing the entire policy because the Code of Ordinances outlines what the utility is supposed to be doing about that. And then city council policy, we're asking that you adopt the RTMP as an official city council policy. This is just for speed humps and also for multiway stops. And just for reference, the RTMP is gonna be coming to a work session in September to talk about potential modifications, if that is a request of council. And that is it for council policy revisions.
Thank you. I have Councilmember Honduras.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The best I could tell, I was locked out of Greenwich for a while, but I went through this with a fine tooth and comb, so this is really just syncing up council policy to our UDO and the City Code of Ordinances, correct?
Yes.
All right. And as we know, the City Charter, Code of Ordinances, and the Unified Development Orders supersedes council policy anyway, so unless there's any questions, I move in consensus to approve.
Let me just add, Mayor Protem, this was also just to create no redundancy or no ambiguity about what we were doing on the policy. As the policy chair and the former chair, it was our job to streamline the policy and update it. So as we looked through it and as we reviewed it, we thought that that would be the best course to just delete some of these items. So I would second that motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
All right, so we ready to take a consensus? Thank you.
Mayor Protem, I have a couple of questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Benevente? Go ahead.
Can we take a look at the slide entitled 160.2 Streets, Traffic, and Parking? It says, number four, remove reference UDO Chapter 30-5 Payment and Lue. Can I have someone from staff just to say again the intention behind this removal?
160.2?
So the slide that's on the screen, 160.2 Streets, Traffic, and Parking, and under it, under number four, it says, remove because it's referencing UDO Chapter 30-5 dot F9C Payment and Lue. We are recommending that number four be removed because city council policy originally said that sidewalk waiver or essentially payment and lue money would be used, what's it say here? Shall not be granted under the following circumstances. However, payment and lue in the Code of Ordinances and the UDO define what those circumstances can be used or what those circumstances can be granted under. And so it was city council policy defined or conflicted with UDO and Code of Ordinances about what can and cannot be granted whenever that payment and lue would be granted.
Okay, I guess the reason I'm asking is because, you know, this may be related to a completely different issue when it comes to speed bumps and when we decide to place those and whether or not citizens have the opportunity to pay in part when their street may not qualify under the current threshold levels. This has, this will not impact that process at all, will it?
Correct. That, that is correct. It will not impact it. The payment and lue is only in reference to sidewalk installation by developers whenever they are applying for something like a driveway permit. Payment and lue does not apply for traffic calming measures like speed humps or, or speed cushions. It's only for sidewalks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are you, are you done? Do you have another question, Councilmember Benevente?
No, Mayor Protem. Thank you.
Okay. So, thank you. Great, great answers. So I will call for the vote for a consensus. Councilmember Benevente? And Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, did she type in?
Green.
Thank you. All right, that is unanimous with those present. Thank you. And I will do want to commend Councilmember Thompson on the policy committee. We are cleaning up a lot of things so we can listen and see what's really going on with our UDO and be able to go and do some task on that. So with that being said, we are going to 6.05.
Good afternoon, Council. Mayor Protem?
All right, I've been asked to share with you concerning our substantial amendment to emergency, to accept Emergency Solutions Grant and to alter our homebuyer hero program. To do this, we'd need to amend two plans, one action to amend two plans. The first plan is our consolidated five-year plan. In that plan, we have to list all the anticipated income and expenses. And so we have received notice from the Department of Housing and Urban Development that the city will now be a recipient of the Emergency Solutions Grant. And so with that new revenue, we need to amend Consolidated Action Plan. That also forces us to amend the annual action plan that you just approved, April the 22nd. And so with this new ESG funding of about $155,000, we need to add that to our current plan. And so we're gonna ask you to also allow us to substantially amend that. The Heroes Homebuyer Heroes Program, we are proposing a change in funding streams. So we're gonna move $200,000, is recommended to move from affordable housing development, and move that to start the Homebuyer Assistance Program under the Home Partnership Program. That funding stream allowing us to make that $200,000 remove citizens and residents from having to have a match to get the Down Payment Assistance Program. So if we're allowed to move that, then that would get rid of the resident have to provide a match to receive the down payment. So what is ESG? ESG stands for, again, the Emergency Solutions Grant, and what that does is that helps individuals and family regain housing after experiencing homelessness or a housing crisis. So there's a few extra, there's a few eligible activities that we can do with that. We can do things such as street outreach, emergency shelter, homeless prevention and rapid rehousing, and then pay for our Homeless Management Information System, known commonly as HMIS. In order, before we can make proposals on what we do with that, we need to consult with the COC, our ESG partners and the community at large. So if you accept the report and accept the funding, then we'll start to turn our attention towards consulting our community partners as to what those activities I'd like to see. We have begun some of it, and I'll share those results in a moment. Under outreach and shelter, there are some maximum limits as to what you can do with CS, CDBG. Under outreach and shelter, you can spend a 40% maximum, which translates out of this $155,000 about $60,000. The city will also receive 7.5% in administration costs. I do want to note that the Homeless Management Information System, the city does already pay for that for our community in an interlocal agreement with the county. So those expenses is already covered, and we're not gonna recommend coming out of the grant. We did engage the COC preliminarily so that we could come to you with some proposals and what their priorities are. As you can see here, some of the priorities for our community would be homeless prevention and rapid rehousing, or we can take people off the street and get them placed rather quickly, or prevent them from being put on the street by paying deposits, rents, and utilities. The second identified as the greatest need in our community would be support of the emergency shelter, along with, you see, their street outreach and HMIS. HMIS was the lowest priority. So what's next steps look like? If you adopt this information and give us the green light, we will ask that you hold a public hearing on August the 12th so that we can begin the, the next steps of submitting our plan to HUD, letting our community know that this money is available, and ask them to submit some, some proposals. Nonprofits can apply for this ESG funding for their activities. We will pass down the, the match. There is a match associated with this grant. It's dollar for dollar. So our nonprofits can, can do that with some of their time and the resources and the talents that they have locally. The scoring criteria will be according to the results that we have gained from the COC in our community survey. We have put a caveat in there that the nonprofits need to establish a presence at the DRC, now known as Fayetteville Cares, and they need to have experience with unhoused populations and must align with the city's goals and the COC goals. So that's all I have, and I'm here to take any questions you may have.
So we do have some questions. I will go to Councilmember Thompson and then Councilmember here.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I'm glad I waited for the end of the presentation because you answered some of my questions as I was going through. But I'm glad to see that we got awarded the Emergency Solutions Grant. But I was sitting here and I had a conversation with the, I had a conversation about homelessness. And I guess what I'm trying to say is, some people are just a small accident away from being homeless. Some people are just a car breakdown away from being homeless. And I'm glad to see your priority list, which is prevention. But I would, what I would like to see is when you have those conversations with the COC, whether it's the Day Resource Center, whether it's Manor Church, or whether it's community partners, on what solid programs is gonna be used to help people in reality? That's gonna help people who's about to get rid of their home, help them pay their bills. I mean, prevention is, is, is good, is real good, but we need some hard evidence on what this $200,000 is gonna be used for. So I don't know whether, when you get finished with the public forum, you're gonna bring that back to us, but I'm anxious to hear what that's gonna look like. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember here?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I, I was gonna move to, because I think you're doing some great things. I mean, we got a lot, there are always some opportunities for further answers and amendments, but just seeing what we're trying to do with housing and, and, and supporting the urban development, you're trying to consolidate the plan. I mean, I, I think it's great. I think you're doing some great work over there in community development, and I'm, I'm ready to move forward if there's a consensus, if we do that this evening to, to accept.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's what I was, yes. Yes. Okay. Unless you don't have any more questions from anyone. Then, then Mayor Protem, I would like to move that, that we received this excellent report and that we accept the substantial amendments that were brought forward for the consolidation plan and for the Housing and Urban Development 2020 Plan.
And I have a second from Councilmember Davis. Any discussion? So before I call for the vote, just, you know, this is in our plan of getting more homeowners here in the city of Fayetteville, so this is one way that we're helping trying to push that.
If, if, before we move, I'm glad you said that, that's just because I had this conversation. Mr. Baker, did we open the category anymore? Didn't I see somewhere that there was another group?
You're absolutely correct. Yes, sir.
That was added for the?
When y'all approved the, in April, the 22nd, July 1st, that opened a third level, which includes teachers for Cumberland County School System, first responders. Cape Fear Valley, yes, sir. So it opened them up to a $30,000 threshold.
The city of Fayetteville was there, so, yeah. I thought, I thought that was very, very good when I saw that. Thank you.
It's our step to have people work, play, and work, live, and recreate in the city of Fayetteville.
I think, I think that's a very good move.
Yep.
I hope we really get a lot of, of our citizens and others to take advantage of it.
All right, I'm gonna need to call for the consensus. Councilmember Banks McLaughlin? Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin?
Green.
Councilmember Benevente?
He is green.
Okay, that is unanimous with those present. Council, before we move to 6.06, I know the mayor had an appointment and he's supposedly coming back, and I don't know if I'm allowed to do this, but I was going to ask, can we put it to the end of the agenda if he does make it back? But we, the city manager and the mayor both have lots of thoughts about this, and so I feel that, yeah, we could. Councilmember Hodges? Can I get a second? Second by Councilmember Davis. All those in favor, please vote. Or oppose. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin?
Green.
Councilmember Benevente?
I'm sorry.
Agree.
Okay, thank you. All right, so with that being done, we will go to 6.07, and we will, I will go to Councilmember Thompson, and your five minutes is started.
Which is related to the item we just put to the back.
Kind of, sort of, maybe. Councilmember Thompson isn't on.
She's doing two things.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Colleagues, this item is for us to do some future and forward thinking and forward acquisition into owning properties that we're currently renting. I'm recommending that, I'm recommending quite a few things, so I'm going to try to go slow, is that we create a CIP fund in order for us to support purchasing property instead of leasing long-term property. This can be identified by doing another, a number of different ways. I'm going to leave that to staff at the end of my presentation to give them direction on how to move forward. But for a council to have no options when it's time for us to renew a contract is really not an option. So I am asking for the consensus of council to do a number of things. For staff to identify properties in advance that we are currently leasing that we can own, sustainability for these properties that we're going to have for 20, 25 years. We can't keep renting property for 50 years, i.e. substations. The police department is not going anywhere. We are already renting substations for over 15 years. They're still going to be here 30 years from now, so why are we still renting them? We would have paid for them two, three, maybe four times over. Next is for, i.e. substations and any other department that is renting, for them to identify in advance an optimal place for them to locate if we decided not to renew that lease. Three is for council to create a CIP fund, not just for this council, but for future councils, because most of these contracts are three, five, even seven years, and some of us may not be on council during that time, to give them an option, whether they want to continuously lease or continuously buy. I, as this conversation came up, we was talking about the Cross Creek on Rayford Road that we are currently leasing. Now they are willing to sell. So if the proposal came for us to purchase, where would we get the money from? The only possible way we can get the money is from getting it out of the general fund. That means that we would have to circumvent our own policy by going less than 12% to purchase that property. But we wouldn't have, we would not have to do that if we created a CIP fund. And lastly, is for us to use, not just us, but future council, the discretion on how they would want to move forward. I believe that there was a time when we used to rent City Hall, but somebody made the decision that it needed to be permanent, and I'm glad that they did because we will still be here years and years from now. I believe that we want to be good stewards over our constituents' funds. This is the best way for the city to move forward. We can't keep doing business the same way. We have to be using our forward thinking and how we want things to look 10, 15, 20 years from now. So I'm, that is my proposal, that is my motion, and I'm subject to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Green?
I just have some questions.
Okay.
Okay. Are you proposing that this be the only option? Are you just wanting another mechanism in place to have funding to purchase when the purchase should be done? Because in not every, in not every circumstance do I believe we need to purchase a property. So that's, I'm just asking your, where your?
You're absolutely correct, but that is not, there's only two options. One is to rent, and one is to own. Those options will only come when it's time for us to renew a lease agreement. Most lease agreements are five, three, five, or seven years. I can't give you that option because some of us may not be on council at that time, but at least that gives them an option.
Done?
I'm, I'm not sure.
You need more clarity?
Well, I'm, I'm just a little bit unclear about whether you're, you're just wanting the CIP fund to be there.
To be available.
So that it could be an option to purchase if that were the correct option at the time.
That is correct, because as we stand right now, we get these lease agreements 30 days prior to them being renewed. That doesn't give us an option, because we have no other place to go and we have no other funding.
Okay.
Okay, so before I go to Councilmember here, city attorney, I have a question, a policy question. So Councilmember Thompson gave his, his report, and it came down to like a minute and 30 seconds left, and I have some council members that have some questions. I think for us to move forward, can we add another five minutes?
That would be your call, Mayor Protem. You could ask the board how they feel about it, but technically, the five minutes is supposed to include the questions, so at this point.
Yeah, yeah, it's a full five minutes, so. Yes. So I think that this is, I mean, we, we're at, what are we at? Deputy clerk? I think we're at like, we're at zero. We're at zero. So I have two other people that would like to have a question. One person got a question. It's a teaching moment. Would council be opposed to me putting another five minutes up or another three minutes? It's up to y'all.
I would be opposed to that. I would be opposed to that.
Okay, that's, that's. I would, okay, wait a minute. So what, the question about, okay, yes.
Are you asking that question just for this evening?
Yes, I'm just asking for.
Asking for it to be added to?
No, no, I'm, no, I'm just saying, I'm willing to give three more minutes, so the two people that wanted to speak could. If you, if we can't, I'm all about policy. I mean, I can knock it out and say we're done.
Well, I, I would go along with it for this, for tonight, for this item, because if the questions aren't asked and you don't understand, then the item can possibly not get support when maybe it should get.
Councilmember Thompson, we're speaking, Councilmember Benevente, I'll come around to you.
Let me just say, Madam, Protem, I am the policy chair.
Yes.
And I would say we do not deviate from policy.
Okay, all right, then I will hold my request back and I will call for the vote. Yeah, will you say your motion of what you're asking for one more time?
I made my motion and I gave him four points. If I go over to get it, it'd be another five minutes, so.
So what he is asking for is consideration of receiving?
I'll do it, Mayor Protem.
You don't have to do the four points.
My motion is for us to have an option to purchase property instead of leasing property that are long-term properties. That's it in a nutshell.
I'm sorry. All right, it's called, okay.
You know, generally, when we have the councilmember requests, it's for staff to come back.
Right.
Something, it's not necessarily for council to take action, so maybe just some clarity around what you would like for staff to do.
Well, I would redirect my four points again. I would like for staff to come back and give us a list of properties that we're leasing. I would like for staff to come back and give us options of where those properties can go if we decided to purchase. I would like for staff to come back and let us know how we create a CIP to fund those properties. And I would like the staff to let, put it in writing or a policy for not just this council, but for future councils to have options to do just what we're trying to do here tonight. That is my motion.
All right, I call for the vote, for consensus. Do we have a second? Second? It's consensus. Green. Councilmember Benevente?
Green.
No, it's, it's consensus. All right, that is unanimous with those voting. Thank you. Okay, got me. Okay, we're going to move on to 6.08. Councilmember Benevente?
Thank you, waiting for the timer to start.
It's started.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm sure you've seen the emails the same way that I have of members of our community and folks outside of the community concerned about citizen video of one of our K-9 units being struck by one of our police officers. I believe that our city manager has stated that we received over 6,000 emails. When I've seen comments from our City of Fayetteville Facebook page, I take note of who exactly is commenting, and I've noticed folks locally, because I know that's sort of a question, is what percentage of folks that are commenting are from our community versus outside of it. While I consider them all relevant, I certainly add greater emphasis on the folks that are local. With all that said, I believe it's our duty as a, as a city council, who has the authority to direct our city staff, reciprocally our city manager, to direct his staff, the chief of police, to release body cam footage that we're legally allowed to do. In this case, certainly welcome our city attorney to tell us whether, you know, this is a situation that we'll have to petition the court for. But my understanding is that because there's not necessarily juveniles, there's not necessarily anything, where loss of life is necessarily occurring, that it should be something that we, as a council, can direct to be released. I'm sure that you guys recall that the chief of police or someone within the communications department had released a list of reasons why they've discovered that, or they've arrived at the conclusion that there were no issues, or rather that, you know, the facts were stated as they were. I think that should lend any credence to anyone who has concerns that if indeed there were no problems and indeed the entire set of facts that were described in writing were, are also going to be shown in the video, then the, any, any sort of issues will be addressed by releasing the video. Any concerns that may linger about whether, you know, there are any additional concerns that need to be addressed will be revealed once the, once the video body cam footage is released. I'll close just by saying that the reason we have these body cams are so that the people can have trust and transparency within our city government, that we're holding ourselves accountable to their concerns. And, you know, the, there's no reason to have these cameras if we're not going to release the footage when the people have questions about it. So I'll leave the last two and a half minutes for questions.
All right, do I have any questions? All right, we'll call for.
Mayor Protem, the, whether it's death or serious bodily injury or not, all the release of the body cam footage requires a court order, so either way, we'd have to petition the court.
Okay.
That'll be my motion then, for us to move that direct staff to petition the court to release this footage.
All right, Councilmember here?
Thank you, Chief.
I can't hear Councilmember here.
Thank you, Chief, as you're coming up. I, I don't know if I've seen what everyone have seen, but I have seen what I have seen on, on the camera, I mean, on the social media. Is there more than what is on social media on the body cam?
Was that, that wasn't the entirety of the video. If you see the video that has been posted on social media, it starts when the dog is actually biting the officer, so there, there's stuff before and after. We have body camera and security cameras.
That shows the, the biting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
I think it's relevant to have that full context that the chief just described from the body cam from security cameras, precisely because when I view the video, I don't see any biting occurring. I've seen sort of maybe the actions of the officer that occurred afterwards. And until we can get footage of the biting that allegedly occurred, I think this is an opportunity for us all to make sure that we're being totally transparent with the people. These are the people's cameras.
Councilmember Benevente, I have somebody with a question. If, you got 25 seconds for this question. Councilmember Davis? Oh, I have you, I thought I had you. I'm sorry, Councilmember Benevente. Okay, let's call for the unvote. It's a consensus. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin? Councilmember Benevente?
Green.
All right, that passes four to three.
What should be more than that, right?
I'm sorry, five to three, I didn't have you down. Five to three. All right, nope, we have to go.
And Mayor Protem, if I may, just to clarify again, this item will come back to the, since it wasn't unanimous, it will just be a regular item on the agenda?
Okay. Perfect, thank you. So I'm going to go to 6.06, and I will let city manager? Or I'm sorry, I'll have Ms. Keisha come up.
Good afternoon, it's nice to have you all back. I'm sure you're excited, too. Staff brought an admin, an admin report on March 25th of 2024 to city council in reference to all the city property that included a surplus list. I then presented that item on, at the work session on April 1st of 2024. Today, we're going to discuss the surplus list that was previously provided and the process is taken to get to that list. Property is acquired by the city for specific projects. To acquire property, staff has to have city council approval before it can be acquired. We can't just go out and purchase property. We can't, if you call and want to donate property, we can't just accept that property without coming to city council and having approval. Now, that is a lot of times done through a large project, like your stormwater projects, when they, when it's authorized for council to move forward with a stormwater project, then that is usually consensus to move forward with the purchase of those easements and needed properties for those. Some of the other ones would be like the River Park on Water Street, the Cat Site, or, or as I said, the stormwater projects. Once council approves, the purchases, they're handled according to funding requirements and state regulations or federal regulations that are usually provided through the funding source. If a property has to be condemned for a project, if you've already approved a project with property purchase to move forward, but we come across one where someone's not willing to sell and we have to go through eminent domain, in that case, we bring it back to city council and then you authorize whether to move forward with that condemnation. We don't just condemn with the blanket approval for the, for the projects. And we do have to follow special general statutes for that. Currently, the city owns 685. Currently, the city owns 685 parcels. Now, each of those parcels has been gone through individually by myself and looked at several factors. I had to look at what the project or the purpose the parcel was acquired for, and if it was available, what funding was used to purchase that property. After that was complete, the parcels that are in use for fire stations or cemeteries, parks, creek trails, airport, the FEMA properties that we purchased with HMGP funds that we have to, they have to remain on our, in our ownership. Condemnations in the larger scale projects like the Cat Site were identified. It's important to note that when a project is designed, it's usually made up of many separate parcels, and in a lot of cases, we don't recombine them. Like the Cat Site is approximately 75 parcels. It's still 75 parcels on our books, even though technically it is one large project. Senior Center East is another one that was a lot of properties that make that up that is still several properties on our, on our list. The airport footprint is another one that has a lot of properties that make up the airport footprint, even though it's the airport. Once those parcels that are in use were identified for like the rec centers, parks, city hall, anything that was left over is sent to the departments. And so I sent it to the individual departments because each parcel is asseted to a city department. The city department that has that asset, those lists were sent to those department directors and they were asked to vet them to determine if the projects that we purchased those parcels for were still viable projects, or if they needed those parcels for any specific reason. After that was done and they sent back, then that left 57 parcels on this, what I am calling an interest list. Now, the reason that I'm calling it an interest list is because the way Article 12 dictates how we sell property, we can't just sell it to anybody. We have to go through a very specific process. That process involves coming to council and council has to declare something surplus, ask us to put it out for bid. Once it's put out for bid, then the upset bid process is gone through. As I understand it, every time a bid is upset, it has to be published again and so on and so on. It's a little bit different than the way the county gets to do it because we're, we don't get to follow the same rules the county does. So what, what I'm trying to figure out is if it's in council's interest to publish this interest list that we have on our website with a form. So if someone is interested in purchasing one of these properties, they would then fill out this form. We would then have to take that individual property to council for you to declare it surplus and put it out for bid. It would be published then. It is important to note that we have to sell the property for fair market value. North Carolina general statute dictates that we do sell for fair market value. So we can't just sell it for, like the tax office gets to sell for what taxes are owed so you get a deal on property. We're not allowed to do that because we're public stewards, we're stewards of public money. So we can't sell it for cheaper. We have to do fair market value. So my idea would be that we would have that fair market value posted on the website because we wouldn't want somebody, it would be a waste of time for someone to come in and not know that they had to do at least this amount. And then after we did that, it would come back. The way it works is after we get the final bid and there's no more upset bids, we would then come to council a second time and council would have the right at that point to either accept the bid and sell the property, or you could decide not to. But that's basically the process that's followed and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have about it.
All right, council member Green.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Who determines the fair market value?
That would either, that would be, you would either get to decide how you wanted to do that, you could do appraisals, or in the past when we've done that, we've used the tax value. Now, since the tax value is getting ready to be reevaluated, then I would suspect that that's probably, it's better to either wait until that revow comes out, or go ahead and have an appraised value done for the properties.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I have a few questions, but I'm trying to combine them into just two. But my first question is, who determined what was considered real access property? And how come we don't have access to all 665 properties?
You, you, you do have access. They were provided to you on April, March 25th, '24.
But they, but they weren't part of this camp that we have in front of us. We just have the 58.
Yeah, because this one is just about the surplus property that we are, the interest list that we've provided. That list is provided to you too on March 25th and on April 1st.
Please do. Out of these 58 properties, some are dated back to 1999, some are dated back to, I think I looked at one that was 2006 and 2009. Why has it just come up that these are excess properties and we're just now trying to get rid of them instead of trying, instead of previous councils not getting rid of them?
I keep hitting this. We did. So this is not a, a new conversation because just a little bit of history back. So probably about 12, 13 years ago, when the UDO was coming out and we, you know, Fayetteville took a big stand of cleaning up and, you know, having the UDO and things like that. We came across a lot of homes that were in bad shape and we had a lot of demolition going on. So we own these, these lots that are everywhere. I mean, at one time, we talked about zoning them for $5, the, you know, if we could do that to get them off of the books and have growth come into neighborhoods, to have new homes that builders would come in and put new homes into these empty lots. So this is nothing new. I think it's, I think it's a testament to staff and the councils beforehand that, you know, we're just moving along and we'll go back to eating the elephant. You know, we've come back around like we're doing with the policy committee. So I'm going to turn the meeting back over to the mayor because this is his, his baby and welcome.
Just one, just one more, just one more question, Mr. Mayor.
I want to, I want to answer what you said too. We have put them out for surplus bid before and we spent money to advertise them and we got no bids because generally, again, people don't want to pay what the fair market value is. A lot of these are also ECD properties. So ECD, which Chris could talk more to that, they were purchased to use for his housing authorities to build on, like in the Hope Six area. That's where a lot of them are was Hope Six.
And that was my follow-up question. You have nine of them on the Hope Six project on Old Wilmington Road that has been there forever, and you have five more that are vacant lots. Are they not able to be moved also? Nobody wants to pay, pay fair market value for those?
They were not actually on the surplus list last time because they were going to be used for a CHODO, I believe is what they called them.
What is that?
Housing Development Organization. Like sometimes they would donate them because we are allowed to donate them to like Habitat for Humanity or certain CHODOs, which I'm not, like the Housing Authority. And what we do is restrict them. So if we were to give them to one of those entities, then we restrict the use for it so that it has to be used for their values or.
So let me make this clear. So under the Hope Six project and those properties that we have on Old Wilmington Road, you can donate those to Habitat Humanity for them to build the low-income housing like they did in District Seven off of Bunce Road? Is that what you're telling me?
Yes, sir.
And how come we haven't tried to venture down that avenue?
That would be something that Chris could speak to because I can't speak to that.
I mean, the city is short on housing. And if we have vacant property that we can use to subsidize some of that housing, it baffles me why we're not doing it.
Yeah, Habitat is aware of all those properties. Originally, back in '06, '07, when council partnered with the Housing Authority on the Hope Six effort, all these properties were kind of identified to be purchased. We originally partnered with another nonprofit as well, Kingdom Community Development Corporation. So between Kingdom and Habitat, they were to develop all of those lots into single-family housing. These are some lots that are left over from a massive effort of millions and millions of dollars of buying property in that area. Habitat is fully aware of them, Kingdom's fully aware of them. We've also had conversations about expanding our nonprofit developers to include some other folks. Right now, out of the list of 57 properties that Keisha has, about 29 of them are something that would be worthwhile for single-family housing. Some of them are odd shaped and weird and small and they just kind of don't work, but some of them work really well for single-family housing. And so part of what Keisha's doing is putting that list out there. If she gets interest from an affordable housing developer, she's going to immediately kick them to me. And then we would come back to council and say, hey, we're helping to fund this effort with free land and with cash money so that they can build a house and put a homeowner in it.
Sounds good. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you. Hey, Ms. Keisha, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
I just wanted to kind of preface it with this. I'd started probably attending some of these conferences and then the manager and I were at a housing conference in Dallas and the number one discussion was returning public on land to help mitigate the housing shortage and to help cities compete with this. And they gave example after example of how over time, cities have bought land, counties have bought land, DOTs have bought land. And there were a number of examples of, of just unpurposed land that, that could be used, not only to, to return to the tax roll, but to meet a need. So when we started talking about this, I'm looking now at Durham presented their vacant lot, empty land, purchase a little different than just advertise it in the classifieds or post it online. They did an actual RFP that you get the interest of, you know, developers, affordable housing, habitats, or whoever to say, hey, we've got a request for proposal and this is the property that we have. And maybe there, there's interest in purchasing multiple tracks or maybe there is, but they put some criteria in it that, you know, if there's going to be any incentive and it's not fair market value, then it has to serve a certain purpose, you know, low to moderate income or some of the other things that we have. So my question to, to you, Ms. Keisha, and that's probably be more of a Chris question. Were we looking just to list this, just to notify people like we typically have done? Or we're looking to do a request for proposals to get people's attention to say, hey, there are, you know, several lots in the city that the city will do X for, you know, low to moderate or, or something that fits that?
We are open to doing whatever you would like to do as long as we follow the North Carolina general statute for it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just add to that, that I think my understanding of the attorney's office and Keisha's recommendation is to put this out online. If council would like us to develop some RFPs, we're currently developing one for the Blunt and Gillespie property. That's going to be, some of these are a little trickier though, right? So if you've got properties in downtown Durham, that's, that's a little bit more of a hot commodity than property that we have in, you know, our Hope Six area, for example. So, you know, we do have to package that and try to help people understand what city resources are available to help make that into some future project. And then we've also, as Keisha mentioned, quite a few different North Carolina general statutes that we have to follow in how we do it. But that's absolutely something that, that we could consider doing with. Out of those 27 that I identified, there's three blocks of four or five properties together. And, and I think I would recommend attacking those blocks individually and, and having the rest of them kind of out there as onesies and twosies that are on our website.
Yeah, and, and council, just last thing I'll say about it. You know, there's different, different needs for different things. That the downtown will not need as much incentivizing as some of the, the other areas that you talked about. So I mean, that, that, it's not a one or, it could be a and and, that you have a certain package that meets the needs, a low to moderate income, where you're trying to encourage more neighborhood infill development. We know we've got to do that for some of our older communities to make a comeback. You know, that, that, that can be the start of the turnaround for some of these communities that hadn't had any, you know, we tear down houses all the time, we demo them, but hadn't had any new construction in some of these older neighborhoods in 50 years. But, you know, one piece starts with, with, starts to change. And I think if we have lots that are in more of a prime location, I'm not necessarily saying package that with this, with the other stuff. But it's just something to consider rather than just the same old, same old, just listing it where, you know, people go to the courthouse every day to look for stuff like that. I mean, but a request for proposal gets the attention of, of some of these agencies or developers.
I, I will say, after working pretty closely with Keisha and spending several days looking at GIS and floodplain and zoning maps at every single one of these properties, there, there's not many very attractive properties on this list. There are lots of properties, 27 of them in lower-income communities that could be used to work towards revitalization and infill housing, mostly in the Hope Six area. We've got one or two out in the Murkison Road area as well. And we're, we're definitely always open for a nonprofit to help us with that, or if a for-profit developer wants to buy one of those lots at face value, Keisha is well-equipped to do that. But, you know, there's, there's not a lot of, you know, very, you know, attractive downtown, here's a lot ready for private sector development stuff on, on this list.
All right, before I go to Mayor Protem, the last thing I'll say about that is, I guess it, you know, and I, I just kind of wanted to see what this process was first, but how do we determine what's surplus and what's not? Because, you know, we had a big, long list of stuff that we own and then there's what we determine we want to do.
I went over that before you came, but I will tell you again how that works. That works by, what I did personally was went through all, how many was it? Eight hundred, 660, yeah, 665 properties. What has to be determined first is each, each property that we have is asseted to a certain department because that department's funds paid for it, for a specific project. The city cannot purchase property without city council having authorized us to purchase property. So we never purchase property unless it is for a project. Generally, they're larger projects. So like, for example, Cat Site, 75 parcels on that list are the Cat Site. When we do a large project, a lot of times we don't recombine them. So we have certain projects like Senior Center East that really we think of as one parcel, but they're not. They're a conglomerate of parcels. So first, we, I went through each one individually, determined what project it was purchased for and when I could ascertain what funds were used, what funds were used, because that's important also. If a property was condemned, we can't just sell it. If it was condemned, we have to offer it back to the person who we condemned before we can get rid of it. If a property was donated, we can't just sell it. We have to offer it back to the person who donated it to us. It's very clear on general statute how we can get rid of property and what property we can get rid of. So after I went through and determined which ones were fire stations, which ones were parks, rec centers, the airport, the airport's another large one that has a lot of properties. After I did all that, then the next step is to send it to all the directors that hold the asset. And so I sent them the parcel list that I then had and said, these are the parcels that I have determined could possibly be surplus. Can you check and see if they're still in your plan, if you still need them for a project, and then get back with me? After they came back to me with that, that list is what, what was left, the, the parcel list that you have. Now, also, what I didn't say that normally I do is if you come to me and ask me to purchase one of our properties, I do then send it out to all department directors. If Chris says, I don't need this anymore, then we do send it out to all department directors and PWC to say, is there any reason that you think we need to keep this parcel or does your department need it for any reason?
Sort of discretion of whether it makes your list or not is up to the director. So the director could say, you know, yeah, we bought this, Parks and Rec has this land that we've had since '86 and, you know, I don't think it should go on surplus, so we, we bought this for, for this purpose, but it's not programmed, it's not funded, it's not on council priority. So they, they had the decision, the discretion to make a decision to keep it or not. Mr. Hewitt, how did that work?
It's also in your policy, but yes. But if you take, we'd be happy to show you what those lists look like. But Michael doesn't like to mow extra stuff. Chris doesn't like to pay to have Michael mow extra stuff. And so, it's Michael here, we're gone. But, and one of the things that we were hoping, as Mayor and I had a brief conversation is, is that regardless of, of council's ultimate action in surplusing these or other properties, or, that's not the right word, authorizing us to publish them for.
Interest.
Interest. Because there's a form we'd have you fill out that would allow us to go through and, and the person of interest to go back through and do additional due diligence. This establishes a process for us to get there. So if there are other parcels that, as the departments are asked to go back and relook at those items, we can do that, but this would be the process that was set up, that would allow us to have a process, rather, to move forward with that and have those parcels published.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so council member Thompson, you good? I, I see names, I'm just trying to catch the order.
Along the same line, out of the 57 properties, I think the value was 260 something thousand and a half. dollars. My question was going to be, how much are we paying to mow it, maintain it, equipment for years? I mean, some since 1999.
Some of them to potentially may not have the 57 for surplus, but some of those are in places like Hollywood Heights where we had FEMA bought out houses and we have to maintain them. It's any variety of, of issues which are out there. There are strategies that many cities have used. The mayor mentioned Durham. Pittsburgh is another where they had a lot of very narrow lots and they went down and said, okay, property owner A and property owner C, we're willing to divide property B between the two of you and, and it goes back on the tax rolls. And again, we, that, those are all options that are available us, available to us now that we have the interest list that if there's no one who is desirous of buying them.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Mayor Protem, then Councilmember Green and McNair, how you doing? Councilmember McNair?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have a question. I want to go back to what Councilmember Green asked about who decides the value of it. And you said we could go by the tax value. And I don't know if I heard this right, or we could make up, figure out what the value is.
We could have it appraised to determine what the fair market value is. Legally, tax value, the tax value is supposed to be the real property value for the property, but that's only done, that would have been the year that it was done in. Yeah, so it's getting ready to be reassessed next year.
So I guess my question is, we have sat here and said, you know, we have these, you know, these properties, it's costing us money to keep up with them. A lot of them, they're not going to be used really in the big scheme of things. So, and, and we heard they're probably not worth what the tax value is.
No, I, I, my guess is with the revaluation, they'll be worth more than what is on this.
Okay, so let me rephrase that. I think that I would like the RFP to go out before the tax assessment comes out because my goal, and I don't, I'm not speaking for me, is that we would like somebody to build on these and then we get the tax revenue from it. That's how we're having to build our city. But once these tax values, the new evaluation comes out, everybody that owns property is going to have to tighten their belt. It's not going to be as easy to build that, you know, that piece of property that we're saying is not, you know, it, it's assessed for $5,000. If it goes up 40%, you're talking-
Seven thousand.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we want to entice people to come to, to do this. And, yeah, that was my question. So you're saying the only way that we can say what we want to spend them on is that it has to be appraised? Or the tax value?
Tax value.
Okay.
The only thing I'm stating is North Carolina General Statute dictates that we have to sell our property for fair market value. Unless we partner with a nonprofit organization and our policy says the same, our policy is 155.6, I believe.
So if a nonprofit came in?
Okay, I'm done. I'm good.
I'm good.
All right. You, Councilwoman-
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I would like to throw out an idea of using a, a BPO, a broker price opinion, because that would allow, I think you could do it in a lot of different ways. It would look a lot of different ways. For those of you who don't know that, what that is, that's a licensed broker who's, who has the ability and authority, because you have to have a separate kind of licensing, to make an opinion on what that price is. It usually comes to you in a range. There's pluses and minuses about it, but you could almost do a list like we do record services. You could do a list and rotate that list so we didn't get stuck and only one person gets to have that opinion. It's a thought. I don't know the pros and cons of it, but it would certainly be way cheaper than an appraisal and it would be an alternate to a tax value, but then you can see where it falls in line with the tax. If it ultimately comes back to the council to make that decision anyway, then we have all of that information to make the best decision we could make with the information that's in front of us. So I don't know the legalities of that. I, I don't know.
We can certainly look into that.
Just an idea. Now, my question, did that help you, Mayor Protem? Not really?
I'm good.
Okay.
All right.
So what, I like the mayor's comment about the taking, or maybe it was Mr. Hewitt's, the property is in the middle between two properties and it's not big enough to do anything with and you basically get property owners on each side to agree to just take it and add it to theirs. I've done that before in some things that I got left with that were held by Hala Lumber Company many years for money owed and then I get left with this little strip of land. So I've seen that happen and it works. So, but what happens with, I know in the past, I don't think we do it anymore and if we do, please correct me. What happens with properties that are in flood zones or floodways? Because I've noticed that when I went kind of with your first list that you did, Louise Street, in the back of Beaver Creek, I think it's Beaver Creek, there's a lot of land that was, it says in the deeds that it was deeded by the builder because it was in a floodway. So what happens to those properties? Is it just in perpetuity that it sits there?
Louise Street, a lot of Louise Street was done with FEMA funds. So the restrictions on those are that we can't sell them.
Right, okay.
Obviously, because they were a buyout program and we wouldn't want to get into the same problem again for it to happen again. So a lot of those are buyouts. I will say over the years, what I noticed looking through the list is a lot of times we were donated property by developers simply because they couldn't do anything with the property. And for whatever reason, they donated it to the city and the city.
So you got to pay taxes.
Right, so we, there are some on there that are, are like that. Those we wouldn't have to keep, but you would have to offer it back.
Right.
Odds are, I wouldn't think they'd want it back, but, you know, odds are. But we would have to offer it back to the person who donated it according to the, to the rules.
It is a fascinating list to look through.
Yes.
But you got to have a lot of time to do it.
It took months. It took months for me to do it.
I believe, I believe it. I'm surprised it didn't take you longer.
It did take me months.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman McNair?
Yes, thank you, sir. The city manager mentioned Hollywood Heights. Recently, I got a, received a couple of calls from the residents there and they are really wanting something done about the property that's boarded and the vacant lots. So can you tell me the plan for that particular house, that one house that's boarded and the properties that are vacant? It's become a nuisance to them?
Right, the properties that are vacant, the land is, is clear. I'm not sure if we actually had developed urban forest, whatever, Michael, for that. What do we call that?
Come on, the flooded?
Urban forest. And so we're trying to assume, I've not been down in there in a minute, but I will go this week, to try to allow that area to go back to a natural state so it does not require constant mowing and stuff, you know, but still not be a jungle. But that's something that we'll take a look at. Adam and Michael will, so we'll get your report back on that. The house that is boarded, I hate that development, I mean, Public Services is not here. They were taking the lead on that over you, Keisha. I don't know that, is that one that we owned and we haven't? I'm sure if we owned it, we would have already taken it down. That may have been one that did not.
I think that the ones that we bought were already taken down.
Yeah, we will check on that one as well. But if it had a code enforcement notice on it, that's, we'll check on that one, Kelly, if we can. But we'll get you back information on both, both of those items.
Okay, so you said that the vacant lot, you guys are going to allow it to grow up?
Yes, ma'am. We need to find a way that there were, how many houses? Do you remember?
Twenty-seven.
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 And the idea was not to maintain those as, as park, you know, like grass and, and things like that. So it needed to be some type of plan to allow them to go back to a semi-controlled natural state. And I just don't know what that is at the moment, but we'll get you information about that. But it was not to keep it mowed as if it was a, a yard. That was, we had to hold them, we have to hold them, I think, in perpetuity.
Yes.
But we will, we'll get you, we'll get information back on that.
Yeah, they're asking that we keep it mowed.
Yes.
So.
Yes, ma'am. We will take a look at that.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman. All right, so council, as we bring this to a conclusion, I know we have a couple more items to, to get to.
No, we're done.
Oh, really? Y'all already did the council member request? Wow. Very proud, very proud. All right, as we conclude this and, and the meeting, hope, council, that maybe in your motion or your action that you can leave some room for the manager and his team to look at possible RFP and, or packaging this in a way that is more attractive so that, so that we can get a little bit more lift than just simple posting it or, or to work with, with Keisha and the real estate team to think about how it is. I sent us a copy of the RFP I mentioned for, for Durham that was used, but there are a number of cities that are, that are doing that, that kind of incentivize what they want to do. But entertain a motion, I guess, or some direction for, for staff? Okay, Mayor Protem, I'm sorry.
Did you want to make?
I was just going to add to your motion, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, that even if we don't get any bites, if we send out the RPF, we still need to do something with the property. We can't keep passing stuff on from council to council for items that has been on the books since 1999. So no matter what the outcome is, we need to do something.
Okay, so with that being said, I make a consensus motion that council consider the consideration of receiving city surplus, real property interest list and consideration of directing staff to publish the list for sale and to maybe, and to use as an RFP.
Second.
This motion by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilmember Thompson. Any discussion on that? All right, council will look to you for your votes on that. Thank you, Ms. Keisha. Thank you, staff. I know this is quite a daunting amount of work. Benefante still on? Okay, and banks- Green. All right, all right. Motion carries by those voters. All right, motion to adjourn. Sub move. All right, good job, guys.